Good evening and welcome to the City of Everett Planning Commission meeting for Tuesday, October 17th. If I could have role, please.
Acting Chair Tisdale.
Here.
Commissioner Jordison.
Here.
Commissioner Beck.
Here.
Commissioner LaVera.
Here.
Commissioner Dunn.
Here.
Okay, has everybody seen the minutes as mailed out? And is there any changes or things that people?
I don't have any changes.
Okay. Anybody have a motion?
I move to approve them at minutes.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded. Roll.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner LaVera.
Yes.
Commissioner Beck.
Yes.
Commissioner Jordison.
Yes.
Acting Chair Tisdale. Yes. Okay, any reports from any of the members? Activities or?
No report.
No report.
Just one item I want to mention that I caught a, on Everett TV, I saw a Public Safety Committee meeting discuss the opioid epidemic. And I'm, apparently it was mentioned that the Planning Commission is looking at it. And I don't know what we're looking at because I haven't seen anything for a while. But I thought I heard you mention that you were going to have something like some kind of a status report or update for us this week, Alan. But I wasn't sure if you were, if that was all going to be put off until November.
No, I was not planning to give a status update tonight. I will be providing staff report in advance of the next Planning Commission meeting on November 7th. And so we're still working on the administration's position on that. And so, collecting a little bit more information. But we will be preparing a staff report and providing that to the Commission about a week ahead of time. So toward the end of the month.
Okay. Well, I guess one, you know, the thing that I, I think, you know, John Bergdahl, THS came to us about a year and a half ago.
Right.
That was like the summer of 2016. And then again, last summer, I believe. And this, you know, and I've been kind of following it in the news. And I think one of the, I'm not sure if it was King Five News or one of the other channels. There was something online that had mentioned that it was presented to the Planning Commission to do a land use code amendment, but we took no action. And I wasn't, you know, I'm not sure if we were given an opportunity to take action on it.
Well, no, the, at that time, you were having a workshop. And so it was not intended for you to take action at that time. It was a workshop to get information and for staff to hear what your concerns or thoughts and comments were so that we could follow up on that. So no, you weren't advertised or scheduled to take action. But the November 7th meeting will be scheduled as an action item for you should you be prepared to make a recommendation to the City Council.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Okay. My report spent most of today in Bellevue at the housing summit. And Governor's Office, the counties, the cities, everybody was there. And the general consensus is affordability is a long ways away. And it continues to gain lesser or harder to achieve it just because of the metropolis that's being developed in Seattle and all the high paying jobs. And it was, I don't say it was a gloomy meeting, but it was, it was kind of interesting that it's, it's, we got a lot of work to do. The lady from Habitat for Humanity of King County did a great job of trying to explain all the regulatory burdens and what that does to the affordability for that housing group. So it's, it's going to be fun next few years as we grow by a few hundred thousand people and where they're going to live. So anyway, that's my report. So first on is Metro Everett and that sub area plan. And that is David Stollheim.
Typically, you'll also ask public for comments and
Excuse me.
For non-agend items before we get into the
Yes. Thank you, Alan. I appreciate that. Is, is there anybody from the audience that would like to speak on an issue that isn't on the agenda today? Okay. Thank you for correction.
Just one staff comment, and that is the comment in response to Commissioner Jordison's question that the next meeting will be on November 7th. We will take up the opiate treatment substitution facility code amendment. And depending upon how far we get with Metro tonight, we may have additional material to cover on the Metro plan.
Good. Thank you. Now you're on, David. Sorry, it's all this excitement and angst is, let's get into it.
Actually, we emailed out a revised agenda. And so the first item tonight is update on the Everett Transit Long Range Plan. And Sabina Popa will do that. So I forgot to put that on the first agenda that we published, so.
Okay. Here we go.
Good evening. And thank you for having me here tonight. There we go. Earlier this year, I was here talking about our Everett Transit Long Range Plan efforts. And I wanted to come back to you and give you an update of where we are in the process. Sabina Popa with Everett Transit Program Manager. I oversee service planning, marketing, and commuter production. And I'll start with a little bit of a background on the plan itself. Brief summary for those folks that didn't hear about it until tonight. And why we need the Long Range Plan for Everett Transit. As we're finding out and as we know, population and our jobs are growing. We are looking at emerging technologies, autonomous vehicles. And our regional transit network is growing with light rail coming and bus rapid transit lines serving Everett in the future. And the density in Everett, as we, as we know, will grow by about 60% in the next 20 years. So we're looking at a lot more jobs and a lot more people. And we see the 2040 density map shows a picture of where that growth is likely to occur. With that, our plan is to establish a vision for our future and identify future transit service in Everett. And also establish service standards so that we know the milestones of growth and the actions that we need to take at those milestones. And also the service standards for modifying service in the meantime. As a reminder, we are a small agency, but we have about 2 million trips a year on 11 routes in the city of Everett. And about 6,500 people on a weekday average are using our service. In June, we had a visioning outreach where we asked people about their transit values, what is more important to them and what they value in our system. And the themes that we've heard, two, two main items. One is keep working on our mission of providing local service. And that's very important for people working and residing here. And with that, a focus on greater coverage and a higher frequency. So people want more buses more often. A little bit of a summary on that outreach effort. We reached out to a lot of folks. We had over 400 surveys returned to us. Many of those folks did, don't currently use Everett Transit. We tried to reach as many people as we could that could use it in the future. And many of them use it for work. And many of them use it for events, leisure, and errands. We asked people, why is Everett Transit important to you? And the top three reasons were reducing congestion, helping people in the community who are transit dependent, that it is good for the environment. And then fourth is that it is less expensive. So cost was a factor as well. It seemed, we wanted to see if riders and non-riders had different answers. And actually, the top three reasons for using Everett Transit and why it's important was the same for both riders and non-riders.
Can you, can you read what those are?
Yes. So the first one is helps to reduce congestion. The second is helps people in my community who are transit dependent. Third one, transit is good for the environment. Then, less expensive than driving. Gets me where I need to go is the pink line. Works for my schedule is the light purple. And lastly, connects me to high capacity transit options such as commuter rail and regional express buses.
Thank you.
So you see, obviously, for riders, connections are important. So the ranking in terms of the types of service that we should focus on, local service was first with 56% of the respondents letting us know that that's important to them. Then high capacity transit and commuter service. In terms of ranking of the transit service elements, we've heard frequency and coverage as the first two. Low cost, span of service, which is how early and how late our buses operate, and then comfort and safety. In general, riders and non-riders had similar rankings, but riders seem to be a little more focused on frequency of buses because they're already using them. They just want them more often. And non-riders had a slightly higher focus on coverage. So keeping those two, two things in mind, we developed two service options that are local service focusing one on higher frequency, which means how often the buses come. And then our second option is focusing on coverage. The frequency option would mean that buses come more often during the busiest times, in the middle of the day, on nights, and on weekends. With this option, we project that more people would choose to ride the bus and they would connect more easier, easily to the broader region and vice versa, from, from the regional network to our service. With the coverage option, people wouldn't have to walk as far and there would be more households and jobs within walking distance of transit. And it is more likely that service would take you directly where you're going. So less transfers involved and our service would be more accessible. Just to give you an idea of, this is our service today. And the different colors on this map represent frequency of service. The teal is community transit service, so the regional network. And you'll see the sounder, light rail, sounder train on the coast there. Commuter service is in dotted lines, so that's limited service. What you see in dark red represents 15 to 20 minute frequency. So you see our Route 7 from the college to the mall is our only route with that frequency currently. The orange represents our routes that have 30 minutes frequency, 30 minute frequency. And then in yellow, 45 to 60 minute frequency. So we are trying to focus on frequency and then show where our current routes go and what kind of service you currently have today. So our first option is focused on frequency. And that would mean we have less routes, but most of them would be at 15 to 20 minute service. So with this option, people would not have to worry about transfer times as much. But on the other hand, they wouldn't cover as much space. So it's kind of fun flipping back and forth. But this is, this is the frequency option. For coverage, it would look more like this with 15 to 20 minute frequency of service on our routes, corridors that are served currently by Route 7 and 29, and then upping the frequency on our other routes. And both of these growth options assume the same level of growth. So in putting these scenarios together, we have the same growth for both options and just distributing the service hours a little bit differently. So frequency and coverage. This is our timeline. So we are in our service options outreach process right now. This information is online. We have an online open house that has both the maps and the difference between the two options. We have a series of neighborhood meetings and drop-in sessions that we're talking to people at and answering questions. And our purpose here tonight is to let you know of our efforts and encourage you to take our survey and encourage the folks that attend this meeting to take the survey and share the information so that we have as much feedback this time around as we had the first time. And I have a survey that is written. And if you complete it tonight, I'll take it. But more information on the two options are in this handout that I'll leave at the, on the table. So if you have any questions, I can answer them now.
There was a mailing, right?
Yes. So the first outreach in June, we did a postcard mailing to the city utility mailing list. And this time, we did stuff the envelopes, the utility mailing envelopes with the information. Yeah.
Are you putting the surveys on the buses too?
Not the surveys, but we have, we have the informational brochures, about 5,000 of them. We distributed them on all buses. We have interior bus ads and exterior bus ads, Herald ads, and our Facebook channels, city and website. Yeah.
So what's your goal for your outreach number? Because you're at 400, which is less than 3% return rate based on the total number of people in Everett. So at this point, it's not statistically significant. So will you be, did the survey go out in a mailing or just notification about this?
The notification went out via our mailing, our distribution lines. Over 400 surveys returned is actually an incredible number for the type of outreach we are doing. And we've never had this type of feedback before. 400 is statistically relevant in smaller sample sizes. 1,000 would be bringing that statistical significance up by a couple of percentage points. So for us, for the agency of our size, I think it's pretty, that was pretty incredible. And I would hope to at least get that this time around too. But I think what we've gathered from June is that we should keep local service and then focus on these two. So then that gives us at least the direction for growth. So.
Are you able to use any of the ORCA data? Is it relevant? Can you kind of query any of that information as to how people are using the system?
We can do transfer information at our, at our transfer points.
But you really can't, it doesn't really tell you where they're coming from and where they're going to and kind of how they're doing, using the system?
Not necessarily unless you do, there's a study that University of Washington is doing in mining the ORCA data a little bit so that we can have an idea of route to route.
Right.
And, and more detailed information would be available, but it would, they have so much of that data that you really have to know what you're looking for and, yeah, do a query like that.
I like the use of the maps to show coverage and frequency. It was, it's a good visual clue, so.
Thank you.
It's a good presentation. Thanks.
Thank you for having me.
Thanks for coming.
Thanks for being here. Good job. David?
Did someone sign up to? I think
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. JT is transit, wait. I'm sorry, I
Okay. Thank you for recognizing me. JT Dre, Transportation Committee Chair of the 38th District Democrats. I'm dumbfounded to hear that we've spent a quarter of a million dollars and found out that the people of Everett who have only one of two municipal transit systems in the state would prefer to have local service. I don't have time to give you a reasoned argument here, but I'm going to try and hit the headlines. I serve on the TAC committee and we were not given an opportunity to really have a discussion about any of this, how it would proceed. There were some pointed questions in the beginning when we had very little time to have a discussion and they were, they went unanswered. Councilmember Stonecypher, who had to authorize, or who is a member of the council, had to authorize the expenditure of a quarter of a million dollars on this survey, voted not to do so. She recently asked Mr. Hinkson, who's the head of the Transit Agency, whether the results were statistically significant. And he said no because the population used was self-selecting. I have participated in transit surveys when people from community transit actually came on a bus and stuck something into your face and said, please, we need a response on this. The survey, if you've read it, was amazingly aspirational and without any context hardly whatsoever. So I would say to you, having this discussion right now smack dab in the middle of the election season strikes me as pretty odd. And I think the reason for it is that it's, it's an effort to preserve the status quo. You would have thought, at least I think, they at Everett Transit would have had the good grace to wait until we had a new chairman of the board and some new board members, i.e. mayor and city council people, so they could chew on this for a while and once they were settled in. But not to be. I would suggest to you that new technology that's just coming online right now may provide an opportunity to tailor a smaller, more custom-made system, if you will, for the community that Everett Transit serves. And if that can't be done or there is not willingness to do that, community transit to the rescue. This is my final point, Mr. Chair. In the process, when this survey was going on, the folks at Community Transit, Todd Morrow in particular, who does government affairs, came to two public meetings and announced the future plans for Community Transit. And those plans affect actually this 20-year plan that Everett Transit is undertaking. They, Mr. Morrow explained to the League of Women Voters and to the SCCIT folks that in six and a half years, ST2 would be arriving in Linwood. And it was in the intention of Community Transit, once that happened, to divert or direct or guide, use any word you choose, their riders who are now traveling south to the UW or Seattle onto the train in Linwood, I think they're calling it Linwood Center. So the net result of that would be that they'll have excess capacity since they won't have to use their buses to transport people south. And their intention is to institute local service. They serve most of the county except for the city of Everett. Their intention, as stated by Mr. Morrow, is to have the local service happen every 15 minutes within a walking distance of a quarter of a mile from each stop. So I would suggest to you, and I suppose you could consider it as part of your planning for the Metro Everett Station too, when that, when that develops in a year, a few years, hence, that if Everett Transit cannot meet the standards that Community Transit intends to meet, then they should abandon the historical, historical anachronism, if you will, of being a municipal transit agency in the 21st century and throw their lot in with the county system. Thanks for your attention.
Thank you. Yeah, Richard.
I just, I just wanted to thank Mr. Dre. I appreciate his comments and I appreciate his perseverance. And I also appreciate Everett Transit and the work you're doing. I'm just, I'm a cheerleader. I, I think it's wonderful that we have an Everett Transit, you know? I hope, I hope we always do. And my hat's off to all the staff and all the bus drivers and Mr. Hinkston. And thank you for coming here. And, and thank you, Mr. Dre, for your concerns and comments. I appreciate your passion. And let's, I, I, I feel that it's all part of a rigorous discussion that we should just keep having. I think there's, there's, we're entering a new time when there might be a kind of renaissance for Everett Transit. And I, I feel that it's, it's been underappreciated for many years. It's been kind of the unwanted stepchild, as it were. And again, I'll just reemphasize that I think we're very fortunate to have them. That's all.
I say those are fine sentiments, but I would encourage all of you to try using it for a week. Fair enough.
Any others? Thank you.
Well, I was going to say something.
Go ahead.
I was going to say that I have regularly used Everett Transit to get to the station and commute to work in years past. And so I'm familiar with the system. So I'm a transit rider.
Thank you. Okay, David. Now you're on.
All right. Thank you. David Stollheim, Long Range Planning Manager. So tonight, we're going to review the land use chapter, which is one of the last chapters in our initial drafting of the plan. Kind of purposely waited to the end to do the land use chapter because we're doing things a little bit differently and that we're kind of working on design and form and some other things first and then seeing how that shapes out to do the land use chapter. And so it, hopefully, it's all coming together and we'll, we'll find out as we put it together and get more public input. So first off, and we introduced this a little bit earlier to folks, but we have a current Metro Everett boundary goes from roughly I-5 to the railroad tracks up north to Everett High School down south, Brown Bear Car Wash off of Broadway. But we've proposed a few changes in the boundary. As we started working on some of the details of the, the plan, we found some properties were split. In some places, the, the intent of where the boundary was, was, was not actually placed in, in the same spot. So kind of have walked through this before, but real quickly on Everett Avenue, we have two church properties there that we split it. And so we took those properties out because otherwise it would intrude well up into the neighborhood. In this area, we actually drew it on I-5 boundary out on the east end. Here, there's actually no other property other than right away in there, but we just used the, the natural boundary. North Middle School, the playground on the north, north side was cut off. And so having all the ownership of, of the school together within the metro boundary. Same thing happened at the high school. We split off part of the ownership, so we added that. And the old Kimberly Clark parking lots down along Marine View Drive, we had one side of it, but not the other. So we've proposed to add that. Along the, the west edge, the intention was to draw it to add that. Um, along the, the west edge, uh, the intention was to draw it really on the railroad tracks, but it was drawn originally on, on, uh, Marine View Drive. And so we wanted to keep it up off of the bluff and really out of the industrial area. Uh, and so we brought that up to, uh, be on the, uh, the upper part of the mainline tracks, uh, in that area. And, now I found my mouse. Over around Providence, uh, we didn't follow the, uh, there's property right along, uh, the edge of Forgotten Creek, um, right in here. And so, rather than just leave those out, we went to the natural boundary of Forgotten Creek, and then there is a little bit of ownership. I think we actually went through some buildings of Providence campus down there and so, uh, cleaned that up. So, those are the boundary changes. And so everything that we've been doing in the plan is really, is now based on those, those adjustments, uh, to it. So, as we do the land use plan, we've, uh, uh, covered this in the transportation chapter, but just, uh, another context of some things is that freight, uh, is important, uh, to the community, and particularly the freight route that goes down to, uh, uh, the, the port area. And so, coming off of Rucker to Pacific and down, uh, Marine View Drive, uh, very big freight route, uh, going through town and starts to find some of the edges here of, of the downtown, uh, areas that we're, we're looking at as part of that. So freight routes are important. Uh, now there's bike routes, and these are the Tier One from the existing bike plan. Uh, the reason to kind of bring this in right now is to, uh, acknowledge also that there's a planned route on California streets. It's a east-west route. Uh, and so as we look at some land use, uh, things happening on the other side of Broadway, uh, that's, that's an important concept as part of that. And then looking at some of the connections, uh, coming down into Everett Station as well, um, within the, the bike plan. So, I gotta start off in how we kind of looked at the, uh, land use plan and, and talk about, uh, sound transit, uh, the Bus Rapid Transit and the Light Rail, because several of the land use changes that we have are actually framed around these things. Uh, first off is Light Rail. We've shown some of the concept drawings, uh, that we did through a, a local process here, the Shorette, where we've looked at trying to have the Everett, um, the Light Rail Station at, uh, Everett Station to serve both downtown and Everett Station. So, we've kind of identified an area, uh, around Pacific and Broadway to Thirty Second. Uh, this is McDougall, kind of as, as this area is being a, uh, location that could help serve both downtown and Everett Station. And, uh, feel pretty good about that. We actually coordinated, uh, routes, uh, with Everett Transit and with Community Transit. All the, uh, current SWIFT routes and the future planned SWIFT routes, including coming down Broadway, potentially, uh, coming up in the future of looking at that. So, the, uh, the Light Rail and the BRT is an important concept. So, this map actually looks at something that Josh did, is a quarter-mile walk shed from the SWIFT stations and from the Light Rail. And so, you start seeing, uh, now with that infrastructure in place, where you actually have some pedestrian walking areas. And so quarter-mile is a pretty traditional thing for, uh, walking distance to transit. Uh, and you can see some of the areas here that, uh, would be, uh, coverage from both the Light Rail and from the BRT. Um, you also find people willing to walk a half-mile. Uh, and so this is showing a half-mile, uh, drawing here, and, and you're seeing that, uh, in large measure, uh, Light Rail and, uh, the Bus Rapid Transit gets pretty good coverage almost of, of Metro Everett, uh, just, just with those routes, uh, itself, which is pretty, pretty good. Um, now the Everett Transit routes, uh, start filling in some of those gaps. And so these are the current routes, and as Sabina just talked about, they're looking at the changes in the routes. Uh, and you'll start seeing that, you know, with these routes, the local routes, that they are also within a lot of these areas that were white, that without, uh, the quarter-mile to the more regional, uh, Light Rail things. And so, we have pretty good coverage, actually, within all of Metro Everett for bus service, um, within these areas. So, one of the things that we've introduced is, uh, idea of some street designations. And the street designations do a couple different things. Uh, first off, um, they help define what types of uses and activities that we might want to see, uh, in those areas. And so, uh, it, um, uh, it's not a Todd Street, it's a TOD Street. Uh, Transit Oriented Development, if I had to spell it all out, it wouldn't fit, uh, within the box. So, whenever you see TOD Street, uh, it means trans-oriented development, uh, not a Todd Street. And so what we propose is looking at where the Light Rail is and where the Bus Rapid Transit. We propose kind of a framework of, of TOD Streets, um, where, where we have these, where we anticipate, uh, the design of buildings and the use of buildings are gonna be a little bit different. Um, they're gonna be very active areas, mixed-use areas. Uh, we're gonna be proposing, uh, some, uh, minimum, uh, building heights. It'll be different on the TOD Streets than in other areas. Looking at, uh, potentially four stories as a minimum within the TOD Streets, and also some minimum floor area ratios within the area, 'cause we wanna make sure we see development, uh, happening. And so we've looked at the Broadway Corridor, uh, throughout, uh, the whole section of Metro Everett, uh, from north to south. Uh, we looked at all around the Light Rail Station. So, we got Wall Street, uh, coming around here. Uh, we got Thirty Second, Thirty Third, we got Smith Avenue, uh, got all of Pacific, uh, going from I-5 all the way to, uh, past Rucker, actually, um, a little bit, uh, into this area. And then, uh, block or two blocks off of every one of, of these areas as being TOD Streets. So, again, these are areas where we're expecting really ground-floor active uses, uh, higher density. We don't wanna see underbuilding in these areas, 'cause we're really, uh, investing in a lot of infrastructure of the future, and we wanna see some big building. One area that we expanded out to, uh, we've identified in the plan, is the, uh, Lowe's site, which is right here. And so we actually do have TOD Streets also off of Fulton, uh, so that we, uh, look at maximizing the potential if the Lowe's site gets redeveloped. It's a ten-acre, um, site there. So, um, so the land use, uh, plan that we have, um, has, uh, basically three, three designations. And, uh, so we got, uh, we've, we've gone from, uh, thirteen different zoning districts or fifteen different land use classification, classifications down to three. And so this is, uh, streamlining just a bit. Um, and, uh, during all the input that we've had, we've introduced this concept into, uh, several of the public meetings and, and open houses that we've had so far. And, uh, so far, uh, there's been pretty good support. And so the, the three designations that we have is a urban-commercial mix, uh, which is all of downtown, uh, B3 Zone going down into Everett Station, um, uh, area, um, and all the way out to the highway. Uh, we have, uh, three different pockets of light, uh, industrial in, this is, uh, the railroad tracks, Everett Station right here. So we have light industrial on both the, uh, east side and the west side of the tracks. On the west side of the tracks, 'cause anticipating Light Rail being in this area is that we've pulled that back down to Thirty Third Street and south from there. We also have a small little light industrial area along the railroad tracks where existing, uh, BNSF offices are along Bond Street. Again, as a little bit of a transition and a buffer to the industrial activities, uh, down here. And the remaining area is urban residential. So this combines several different, uh, residential zoning districts. Mostly they are, uh, four and are five, but, uh, we've also, uh, picked up some R1 and R2, um, zoning all into an urban residential zone. So, when we add on, uh, some of the street designations, uh, the layers that we have for streets, uh, to the land use, what we looked at is, is four different classifications, uh, including the TOD Streets. Uh, but then we've identified pedestrian streets, and pedestrian streets would be streets, again, where we anticipate a high level of, of activity. The design of buildings are gonna be very transparent. Uh, this is kind of your downtown, your core streets. As you can see in this, uh, drawing is that all the, uh, pedestrian streets are really in the downtown, but also in the lower Hewitt Avenue area. We have then pedestrian connector streets, which are usually on the shorter length of blocks, uh, that connect the areas, and also in some of the residential areas, uh, going out in these areas, uh, down south and to the north. And then the last category that we have is a residential mixed-use corridor. And I think my next drawing's gonna talk about that a little bit more, but we're gonna look at some areas where we're looking at some, uh, introducing of some other uses into these corridors. And, uh, this drawing, uh, does that. And so we've looked at the urban residential. We look at some areas that are potentially in transition, um, that they, uh, are suited perhaps to having, uh, both, uh, a residential component, but also maybe some other components there with office, uh, light retail, things like that, uh, medical clinics, things that might, uh, get in there. But we would still anticipate having residential being the primary use, or at least being a, uh, portion of the use of that property. And so, uh, Everett Avenue is one, um, on the east side, east of Broadway, uh, California Street, uh, down in this area. Uh, again, this is where the bike routes planned to go in there, and so this is a area of potential transition. Uh, Cedar Street, uh, north-south, coming into, uh, Everett Station. Uh, and then on the south side, we're looking at, uh, Colby Avenue as being one area. Uh, and then up in the corner here, uh, it doesn't show up very well, but, uh, West Marine View Drive, uh, here, 'cause there's some of the properties along the edge there, uh, could, uh, introduce that. Uh, we also have some areas, uh, that are down along Norton, and we are looking at potentially expanding some of those designations around the Providence Campus down here, of looking at that mixed, uh, residential area. Um, in some conversations that we've had, uh, we'll talk about some of the uses and the overlays in just a sec. So, when we look at the land use with the historic overlays, uh, we are proposing to, uh, minimize the use of overlays. And so, the one overlay that would come out of the existing codes are the historic overlays. We have the Riverside. Uh, we are still looking at the boundary and whether or not to continue to include that down to Everett Avenue, but for now have that drawn into the plan. We have the Norton Grand down on the, uh, southwest side. Then the Rucker Grand is, is not within Metro Everett, but it's right at the edge, um, of it. In our Historic Resource Chapter, we talked about looking at the Hewitt National Historic District as being a potential new overlay. And so as we look at, uh, the downtown area, looking at that, the existing, uh, overlays are all residential in character, so this will be a new, new thing for us to look at the Hewitt, um, District and having a historic overlay there. We do have one other national district, Rucker Hill, but that's outside of Metro Everett. So, uh, in our last meeting, we looked at some of the heights issues. Uh, Niels had walked through that, um, and, uh, uh, kinda walking through this again. Uh, we did make one adjustment, uh, of the height maps after our last meeting. Um, and that is down in the Norton Grand area. Uh, you got some input. And so, um, right here along, uh, Rucker, we've, uh, changed this boundary right in here to reduce that down to five to eight floors before, uh, this line came across, uh, for the seven to, uh, eleven floors. And so, we are proposing to bring that down to five floors as a, as a base there. But as you can see in this map, one of our goals has been to have, uh, all of the, uh, heights at the edges to start transitioning really down to the historic neighborhoods. And so, wanted to show this map to kind of get that feel for how you see to the north is that the, the heights, um, up there, four floors, three floors, four floors, all at the edges. Down here, you got three floors, uh, five to eight in here, but three, three to seven, and five here. So you see that all the, the heights out of Metro Everett, the lowest heights are really at the edges, uh, here and at the edges of the residential. For the residential-only zone, there's only, uh, a couple areas where you get into the taller seven to eleven floors, uh, in some of these areas. But, uh, but residential, we would anticipate to not just be in the residential zones, we anticipate it to be in the commercial mix. So in the commercial mix and the light industrial, as you see here, um, the, the floor heights go higher, seven to twenty-five. Uh, within this area, this goes down to include the, uh, current Lowe's site, um, right here, uh, Everett Station. Here, we got seven to eleven floors kind of, uh, ringing, uh, this, this core area, and six to eight floors, um, within there. We have, uh, proposed some, uh, new off-street parking areas. Uh, currently in the downtown B3 Zone, there's, uh, uh, there's no requirement for non-residential parking within the B3 Zone. Uh, we're proposing to have that, uh, no parking for non-residential to be expanded into this parking area A to include around the Light Rail and also down into the, uh, lower end of, of Hewitt, uh, the east side of, uh, Hewitt, uh, down in this area. Uh, some changes up here, as you head up to the high school, uh, this is on Colby. Uh, right now, I think the B3 Zone does go out a little bit, uh, larger than this for, uh, having, uh, no parking. And so we are scaling that back a little bit in this area, but then the rest of the area would be, uh, Parking Area B, which would also have a, a lower standard than areas outside of Metro Everett, but it would have a higher standard than, than Parking Area A. Uh, this last, uh, map, gonna take a look at in, in this, uh, first section, is the Port Compatibility Area. You've heard some input from the port about the, uh, marine port element in the comprehensive plan. And, uh, we've always known about, uh, this as being an issue. And so we've, uh, drafted a, a map here that would identify, uh, in essence, kind of a port compatibility area. Uh, there's a policy in there that, uh, would be similar to what we are proposing is, uh, like airports, where it's a notice on title as development projects come forth. It just says, uh, "You are within an area that, uh, adjacent to this is a, a port industrial zone." Um, and so you may, uh, have some disturbances as a result of that. So it's kind of a, a buyer beware, uh, process as part of that. This is roughly a five-hundred-foot buffer from the M2 Zone. Um, so, rather than just drawing a straight, uh, five-hundred-foot, we really wanted to follow some natural, uh, lines, street lines, alley lines, and, and parcel lines. So, so, in most of these places, that's where it is. And, believe it or not, all this jagged stuff actually is following, uh, parcel lines and other things in that area. So, uh, but, uh, over here, we have more of a gridded pattern. Okay, so, uh, the land use chapter is more than just maps. Um, there are a few other things, um, that are in there that I'm gonna, uh, kinda highlight. Um, uh, first category is, is, uh, area of reducing barriers to infill and redevelopment. Uh, I already mentioned the idea that we would minimize zoning overlays. Uh, second is that, uh, we're proposing to eliminate the density limits and the maximum floor-area ratio. Floor-area ratio is a little diagram to the right, uh, that looks at how that's done. A point, uh, zero-point-five FAR is a one-story building on half of a lot. One is, uh, total coverage of the lot, and then two would be a two-story. Right now, we have limits on, on the FAR, and, uh, we have some, uh, pictures in the plan that show that some, uh, projects that are existing, uh, within Metro Everett wouldn't be permitted under the current FAR standards that were built, uh, before that. So we're proposing to eliminate that, instead go to the design standards that, uh, Niels, uh, presented to you at the last meeting, where we look at the, uh, bulk and setbacks on the design of buildings, uh, instead. Uh, looking at, uh, increasing the SEPA exemption, so less projects would have to go through SEPA review. Uh, there's a ability to do that through infill, uh, process. So we're looking at, uh, proposing to increase those exemptions. So, less environmental review. It would rely on the review that we do for the plan and the development regulations. And then establishing the new off-street parking areas, which, um, were those areas that, uh, had identified. We have a whole section on, uh, blighted areas. Uh, I know that Commissioner Dunn has asked about this. And so we have, uh, some things, uh, in there, and, uh, one of it is to look at the Community Renewal Act. It's, there's not a lot of tools that, uh, cities and counties have in Washington State to deal with, with blighted areas, but that is one tool to look at that. And so, uh, we're starting some of, uh, the, the study process right now to deal with that. But we also have existing codes that are on the books, but they have not been, uh, enforced, uh, lately. And so part of the, the process is to sit down and say, you know, "Are those codes still good? If they're not good, let's change them, uh, fix them." Uh, but if, uh, we need to do some, some things to, to deal with, uh, blighted areas. For underutilized areas, we have quite a few that we see are underutilized within Metro Everett. Uh, but really, the, the, uh, the real, uh, help that I think is needed, at least with a little bit more of the city lending a hand, is the focus on the east of Colby. So from Colby, um, headed towards, uh, I-5, uh, there's been some nice redevelopment, really, uh, on the west side, uh, already. Uh, and so that's, uh, we kinda think the market will take care of a lot of that. Uh, but really, the east of Colby is an area that we really, uh, want to emphasize. Uh, with one exception is that, uh, we do see that the With one exception is that we do see that the west end of Hewitt, at the railroad tracks, this drawing on the right is looking down Hewitt Avenue. Anchor Tavern would be right here off the right, railroad tracks and the water would be off in the distance. We have the street end that was closed, Hewitt underneath the railroad tracks, and looking at some concept of developing a street end park within that area plaza that would be somewhat of a historical marker as well for the community. And Everett Station, looking at several things, including the addition of light rail that definitely, for all of Everett, I think would be transformative, but particularly for Everett Station would be very transformative. Looking at incentives, in a lot of areas we are, but that's another area of having some incentives, wanting to see mixed use and high density, and then help support partnerships of other folks doing things, including, you heard at the last meeting, the work that the Everett Station District Alliance is doing. I pointed out in the maps about the low site, it's a 10-acre property. It'll be within walking distance of the future light rail. It's visible from I-5, so it actually would be a kind of a landmark piece of property that could be developed, and it's an opportunity for green space and parks because of the size of the parcel. So when we think about trying to get some green space and parks in the Everett Station area, this is one area that could have a good contribution to that. So looking at that. Activating areas, streets with people, so the TOD streets, the Transgendered Development Streets, pedestrian streets, pedestrian connector streets, and again, looking at some minimum height and floor area ratio on those TOD and pedestrian streets. So we don't want to see underbuilding, we want to see a lot of activity that would be happening within those areas. And the building heights, in that map that I showed you, it showed a range of heights, like seven to 11 floors. So seven would be a height that would be provided that you could do of right, but any additional height you would get through public benefit system. And so identified some bonus ratios and things that, identified as things like neighborhood open space, linear green space, public parking, so if you're developing private parking, but you open it to the public to park there, transfer of development rights for historic buildings, public art, agricultural transfer of development rights, or affordable housing. And so looking at those things where you would get additional height. Diagram on the right, the idea of this A is what the height might be along the street frontage without having to be set back. B is height that you could get up to perhaps what that minimum is. So in this case, let's say this is a six-floor minimum height, and then C is you're added that you would get through the public benefits. And so you would be able to get this without a step back. You get additional height with dealing with amassing issues, and you get additional height with doing other public benefits. So that is the plan, but I think it's also important to reflect what our current plan is. So I'm going to quickly go through what our current stuff is, so we can toggle between the current zoning, 13 different zoning districts from B3, which is our downtown zone, to Everett Station zoning, so quite a few different, down to three. So 13 down to three. Our current height limits, a little bit all over the board. We've got heights from downtown, we've got heights that came out of our core residential height limits at the edges, and going up out of Metro Everett into there, and to what our proposed heights are as part of this plan. So a different concept, you see a little bit more of the north-south following the ridge in this design versus this plan, which kind of looks at this core area. This is what if we put all of our current zoning overlays looks like if you tried to map them all at once. So we have a few. We have clinic overlays, office overlays, we have clinic-office overlays, we have pedestrian streets, retail streets, connector streets, historic overlays, core residential areas, we have antique sales map, we've got adult businesses, we've got everything in it. Our proposed land use with the historic overlays would be much less, and actually, left off on this map is, there is one other overlay, and that would be the port compatibility. And so I forgot to put that on here, so we do have, would have two overlays, along with the street designations in here, but getting rid of quite a few areas. This is the current parking areas that are part of the multifamily infill within the code. As you can see, the Parking Area A kind of goes to the other side of Broadway, Parking Area B, and so we've changed that up to have the Parking Area A to come around, to wrap around to Everett Station and the light rail, and the rest of the area be Parking Area B. Provided you a separate paper of areas of zoning boundary changes, although we're, you know, when we go from 13 zoning districts to three, in essence, everything's changed. But there are some areas where there are some boundary changes, and so I've identified some of those areas and have a paper with that, and we can, Josh has some Google Earth stuff, and we can zoom around and take a look at those different areas. In large measure, a lot of these areas, we have a little sliver, Area 1 here, basically is going through the middle of an apartment building and a residential, current zoning. This is a school property. This is a California Street, currently zoned with C1 zoning, I believe. School district property, bus parking right here. Small little area along West Marine View Drive, I think it was an old gas station, service station in that area. Down south, actually, let me cover these two first. We have two areas, actually, three areas, five, six, and seven, we're proposing to go from a residential up to the urban-commercial mix. So five, six, and seven. Seven is Compass Health property, the backside of Compass, this is Broadway for there. The area nine and 10 have identified, just because those areas, the zoning's not changing, it's currently residential in both of those areas, but they also have office or clinic or office-clinic overlays on them. And so depending on how we draft some of the standards, it could have some effect on that, although we have good provisions for non-conforming uses and expansions of them, but those are areas, just because of how the overlays may change, that have an impact on that. Lastly, but not least, is the schedule, public review. Glad to see that I said fall to winter, winter goes all the way till March, but then I see that we have public hearings that we have in January through March. So I think that, you know, we're working on some of the development regulations right now. I think that it's a challenge putting all this together, so kind of anticipate, we'd kind of hope to go out for another round of public open house, but we really want to make sure the development regulations are working as well. So it's likely that that might slip into January, so our public hearings in front of the Planning Commission might move back more towards the March timeframe, but hopefully we can still meet that schedule the first quarter of next year for our schedule. We have, Josh has some Google Earth things, if you want to zoom around and see some of these areas, we can do that, unless you want to stop and take some questions.
I do have one question. This is a lot of information, and what would really help, and I really like how you're streamlining it down to three districts, that's helpful, but what would be even more helpful is to have some photo simulations, and I know you guys are working on that right now, to kind of get an idea for the feel of how these districts are going to look, not just with the buildings, but also with the street corridors, things of that nature. So, and it doesn't even have to be Everett, just kind of an idea. I mean, I know you're throwing some stuff in here, but scale for scale, not just, you know, the aesthetic quality of it, but what the scale really means. If you can do those in Everett, you know, and it's not terrifying, that would be even more beneficial. But it's, you know, just to kind of connect the dots. It's hard, you know, just looking at maps, really understanding how these things are going to play.
And we do have some of that, you know, the building stuff, and if you want, we can have Josh kind of zoom around a little bit with, we spent a lot of time on these buildings and stuff, so we're kind of, this computer's really slow, so it's a little jerky, but if you want to spend a little time, we can do that.
Perfect. We're ahead of me.
So this is the area around proposed Everett Station. You can see here where the train comes in, and then we have a pedestrian bridge that comes over, and this was done by, was it Stantec or?
Makers.
Makers, in that initial contract. We have a couple of models around the vicinity, and you can see that some of the streets are green, and this just indicates what zone we're in. So we have, let's see if I can get this to go. So this computer is really, really slow, so sorry about that. You can see that we're in the commercial zone, which is green. Up around here, we have some urban residential, and then down below, we have some of the urban industrial. So these are just some mockups of what you could build to in that height. I think that the resolution's pretty bad on these as well, just because of the computer. And you can sort of see what the capabilities would be in terms of the building heights in these areas. We have some other areas, too, if you guys have any desire to see some of the larger buildings around Colby and Hewitt for the 25-story sizes. We have some in the vicinity by Marine View. So you just have to kind of bear with me as we do this, because it is just painfully slow.
For ones near the historic overlay, and Norton?
Yeah, Norton Grand is what he's talking about.
You don't have the county courthouse up there addition yet.
Take 25 years.
All right, so here's the area around Pacific and Rand.
David? Hey, David? Would it be fair to say you're getting to know the city of Everett pretty well?
Actually, it's not fair. I'm getting to know Metro Everett fairly well.
That was a joke.
I still rely on Alan to tell me where the other places are, so.
Well, you guys are really getting, developing the kind of sensitivity, I think, that we're looking for, and I'm impressed, you know, with what you've done, so.
So based on the feedback from the last meeting, we've adjusted these building heights. As you can see, they're a little bit lower than they were before by two floors, was it? So, you know, I just kind of put these together as an example. I mean, obviously, that'd be much more nicer buildings, and if there are issues with neighbors and stuff, there would be setbacks that would kind of come back off of the west side and mass a little bit more on the east side, where it's a little bit more of a commercial area. But you can see that with that, you know, you're not having as much of the shading, there's not as much of a shadow created by the buildings, and, you know, while people in that area are obviously going to see them, it's not quite as imposing, you know, as it would be under current regulations, for sure. And you can see that this is right on that boundary, too, of the urban-commercial and urban-residential, and here is where we've sort of expanded, or changed the zone, so, or the proposed zone, so that, you know, these building heights will be reflected a little bit more accurately.
And again, I'm going to go to the photo simulation, photo montage idea, and just pick a sample street from the districts, as well as the street types, because this is very helpful. But just, you know, even a two-dimensional picture where you kind of simulate what the environment's going to look like.
From the street level kind of thing?
As a typical, as a typology, if you can just show what the typologies are. Along with this, I think it would be really, it'll be helpful.
Sure. You know, we can get down to, you know, kind of a street level on this, and under better circumstances, it'd be a lot faster, but you can kind of get an idea when you go down to the ground level, but I can see your point of having more of the modeling based on the activated streets and pedestrians and more of that, that kind of thing that we're going for, for the urban corridor. So yeah, you can, you know, you can get down probably this far before things start to get a little distorted, and, let me see, some other areas. Niels, you have any other areas you think that would be good?
Let me actually get onto the street. Sorry, I lost it.
Try it. They always warn me never to do live demos.
Yeah?
This is exactly why.
Hopefully, in the budget, there's a new computer headed towards you with a big processor.
Well, you know, we had a computer that was at least a little bit better than this, and that one is in the shop at IT right now, so this is a loaner from this building, so I think this is not quite geared for this kind of stuff.
While they're working on that, I had a couple other questions, going back to your presentation. On the building heights, on page 27, just a couple of items that I might just throw in, it's public parking, public parking was one of the amenities that would maybe buy some bonus height or area. I would almost suggest, possibly suggesting underground parking as, you know, somehow getting more, you know, distinguishing just parking as, you know, I mean, I'd prefer not to see three stories of parking above grade, but, you know, and I know that underground parking is very expensive, and many aren't, you know, many developers are not going to be inclined to pursue it, but if it was, I mean, if we're going for, you know, as many amenities as we can get, we may as well just go for the gold, you know? I think if you look at the LEED requirements for like a LEED silver, or LEED gold, or LEED platinum building, parking under the building is, will get some credits. Another thing is in, I think Bellevue has, if you have a water feature, like a fountain at your building entrance, that actually will get you some additional credits as well. So those are the kinds of things that I think that if we really, really get, if we really, as we really drill down on getting these developers to do sort of more high-quality types of developments and buildings, and maybe we can, you know, put a few more carrots out there to help them, you know, make those decisions, just a suggestion.
Thank you.
I like where you're going with it, though. I know that you're in the process of kind of building in terms of these simulations, they are very helpful.
Yeah, it's, what's nice about it is that we have the technology now to do this sort of thing, where at least it kind of gives you the impression of how it would look without being on a two-dimensional surface, because it's really hard to sort of grasp the relationship with the surroundings when you're just looking at kind of like a flat map, and at least you kind of have an idea how they react with their surroundings, what the amassing looks like in particular. Here's another example right by the port.
Oh, and in a public workshop, I mean, people go nuts for this stuff. The only suggestion I have is do have the two-dimensional stuff there as backup for when some, you know, there's always going to be a technology glitch.
Always, yep.
Because at the end of the day, folks are just really wanting to understand, okay, what is the scale here? What does this mean? And, but this stuff is great.
So we're just building an app right now that, as we think about the public notice for this, is that people will actually be able to go to a map and type in their parcel, and they'll get what their existing zoning is and what their proposed zoning is, and then look at that stuff, so be able to find that information real easily, so.
Well, you're down there by the Oaks and the, these two letters that we received.
Mm-hmm.
Could you show us where that?
Yeah, where is it?
So that's down. 31st and Oaks on the.
This is Brandon, California.
That's the courthouse. Oaks and number, just want to turn the height stuff off.
What's the address?
3113 Oaks.
So 3113?
3113 through 3119.
Are you guys going to be able to push this out on, so you're saying that it would go live on the internet, so that people could come into the city website and?
Not this.
I was like, that's a lot of power. The network would attack.
The, the, the app I'm working on right now is basically like, it's a web map, so you click on it, and it shows you basically the outline of Metro Everett, and then you can either click on a parcel, or you can enter an address, and it will zoom into a parcel, and it'll give you a description of what the current zoning, current height, and current street type are for that area, and it'll also tell you all the proposed zoning heights and street types for that area, too.
That'd be nice.
So it'll be a cool sort of tool for the community, where they can just kind of get an idea of what their property would be like right there, and very easily, without having to go through a lot of hoopla's and calling people and all that kind of stuff, so.
That's excellent.
This is in the area where those homes were just most recently taken down. Okay.
I guess in response to that question, we do have in your packet some maps that show some areas where we're proposing to change the designation from.
Is that in here?
Different classifications, either commercial to residential, or residential to commercial in a few locations. I'm just trying to find the, the right map, and I believe if, Area 10?
Nine and 10, yeah.
Nine and 10.
Zoning boundary changes map?
Yeah, the one with the zoning boundary changes, and on map 10, the 3100 block of Oaks.
Got it.
Is.
Is in it.
We're about in the middle of that, that map 10 there. And what we have proposed is leaving that area in its current residential designation. It does have an office overlay currently, but the underlying zoning is R5, which is a high-density residential zoning. And we're proposing to leave it as that, rather than to rezone it commercial. We do believe that, for the most part, we have a greater need to provide capacity for housing than we do to provide additional capacity for non-residential uses. But within this area, anything that is currently established as an office would be, with getting rid of the office overlay zones, would become a non-conforming use. And we have very liberal regulations toward non-conforming uses, where not only can a non-conforming use continue to be utilized for that purpose, it can be changed to another non-conforming use. It can be expanded even, with no limits as to how much it can expand, subject to a public review process. And so anybody who's in this zone that's already got a commercial use established, even if, you know, even today, they might already be a non-conforming use, because certain of those commercial uses in the area, if they're office, they're, they're not non-conforming at the, at the moment, because they're in an office overlay. But if we made them non-conforming by removing the office overlay, but leaving them in that urban residential designation, they still have a lot of rights to continue to use their property as an office or a commercial purpose.
Thank you, Alan. Yeah, you were speaking to the, you speak.
Even if the property is sold, the non-conforming use, as long as they're continuing to use it according to the previous owner, it would, it could carry on as a non-conforming use.
That's correct. In fact, our regulations for continuation of a non-conforming use will allow that to be discontinued for a, for a period of almost two years, and you could reestablish it within that two-year timeframe. And that's a much more liberal reestablishment provision than most codes have that limit it to a year. And so we feel that even though, you know, people might want to change their property to commercial in this area, this is really a residential street. The commercial streets are really, you know, more the arterial and the heart of the downtown. This is a residential neighborhood. The majority of the properties within that block are utilized for residential purposes.
Just another comment I have is, I know you will get to that eventually, but as you develop this tool, being able to look at the sunlight and shade, shadow analysis of what, you know, during the, I know you probably have that, you know, that bells, those bells and whistles available to you, so you will, it'll be good to see, you know, as we get to these taller heights, you know, what, what the impacts are going to be. So, yeah, that's, that's just something, another, another tool that we could, you know, offer up as a, you know, so that the neighbors will know exactly what, what the impact to their property would be.
Yeah, we can, we can do it just by eye in a situation like this, where you can look to see where the building is, and then you can change the angle of the sun to see where the shadow falls, but we can also have another tool set that's a little more robust for GIS, where we can do an actual view shot analysis to see, you know, what the actual, you know, if you were to stand on the top of a building, you know, where, what would be affected, what you'd be able to see, what you wouldn't be able to see, and we can do that for lower buildings, too, to kind of see what exactly would be affected, so.
Another would be, as you develop this, you can start to study the view corridors. You know, you might have a residential neighborhood that's looking out toward Port Gardner Bay, and then, you know, if a building comes up too high, then they lose their view. So that's another, you know, it's not like everybody has, is going to be able to keep their view indefinitely, but at least it can be kind of sorted out so that it's, you know, it's fair, you know, and that certain views can be maintained, you know, in different parts, so you don't have that canyon effect, you know? That's another.
Wanted to offer up something. I had a traded voicemail with Chairman Chris Holland today. He was asking, he'd read somewhere in this material that we were going to propose to eliminate maximum floor-area ratio requirements, but he saw somewhere else where we were going to require some minimum floor-area ratio, or minimum building height requirements. And David mentioned that along some of our transit corridors, in order to discourage underdevelopment, or really wasting the capacity that exists where we want to encourage the higher capacity, that we would require a certain minimum building mass or building height, so that instead of having, you know, a low, single-story building, or something that really is underbuilt for the zoning, particularly in, in transit corridors, that we would require a minimum floor-area ratio. We won't, we won't have, we'll get rid of the maximum floor-area ratios, and we'll regulate building form with a different mechanism that we'll talk about at a future workshop with, and Neil showed some of this at one of the previous workshops, gave you, gave you a little preview for that, but we'll regulate building form in a different method than just with a maximum FAR.
I have a question related to that, because a question came up when we discussed that last meeting about consequences, or unattended consequences around funding, if funding is tied to floor-area ratio, so have you been able to confirm that that wouldn't have any unattended consequences?
Well, I'm not sure I follow the question as it relates to funding.
Well, so for a developer to get investments and loans, that there would, that some of those, some of that paperwork requires FAR, or some requirements around that.
Well, you know, every developer who's going in for funding for their construction project, they, they have to develop a pro forma as to what the land use regulations will allow, and, you know, with our changes here, it'll be a different system than we've been using, but we'll have greater building heights than are currently allowed under most circumstances. And so that, that developer, again, I can't speak for, I guess, the way a lender would think, but as long as it's something that's permitted to go to a certain height or a certain amount of square footage, then it'll give that developer more capacity. We do have some incentives that we're going to be talking about as well, so that in order to go taller, you might have to provide some public amenities in order to go from that range, you know, where we have like five to eight stories, it's called out in some of these areas. You might be able to get five stories without the amenities, but if you want to go to seven or eight, then you'd have to build in some of the public amenities that would earn you additional development capacity.
And so I have a couple to add to that, actually. So on the added heights with public benefits, if we could include maybe some items around climate change, either having a climate action plan, like, like lead certification, you get points for integrated pest management plans, so if there's, you know, we'd have, you'd have standards, but, or energy efficiency, or solar power, or certified sustainable landscaping, or even green roofs, or anything to collect stormwater, like rain gardens, if there's rain gardens of a certain size or collection.
Yeah, those are some things that we could certainly figure out how to add to encourage that more energy conscientious development form.
That'd be great.
Green building.
I had a question about those transfer of development rights. What's an agricultural transfer of development rights in the middle of the metro area?
Yeah, that would be, if we were to get into an agreement with Snohomish County to allow owners of farmland to sell their development rights to a developer, they could take the, those development rights and apply them in downtown Everett, in Metro Everett. And it's something that is kind of tricky. I mean, we probably don't have a lot of potential to, to see that, because we already allow so much density that most developers can't use all the density that, that we allow, and so they don't need to go out and buy it from a farmer to transfer it into Everett. But there may be some situations where in the right location, that program could work.
So that, is that like a, then the farmer has forever given up their rights to develop that land?
That's correct.
Okay.
Their development rights are severed from that property through covenants that run with that land, and they would be able, if we establish such a program, to transfer that to a receiving area within Metro Everett.
A similar concept is the historic building TDR as well, so someone would go buy the rights of a historic building, some other building, that would have the ability to build up or tear it down, and so they would buy those rights, and they would transfer it to their property. So the same thing would happen, so, so that would be internal to Metro Everett, or to Everett versus the agricultural would be external.
Another question. So this Community Renewal Act, you reference various tools. I'm just curious what those tools would be, if you could give me some general ideas.
Okay, yeah, that's something that we're, in the early discussion stages with our attorneys and some outside attorneys, but we've been given the green light to explore the use of Community Renewal Act, which, under the state of Washington, is one tool that allows the city to declare certain areas as blighted, if there is, you know, documentation of blight within the area. And it's, it's pretty tricky to be able to condemn blighted properties. The city would still have to, have to acquire them and pay probably a lot more than if you had a willing seller to acquire blighted property, and, but it does allow the city to designate a developer for that property, which, outside of the Community Renewal Act, you're not allowed to do that, and so, but the, the state law does provide for that, and it's not something that we're certain is going to come together, but it's a powerful tool that a number of communities have used successfully to get rid of some blighted buildings and stimulate economic development within their downtowns. Olympia has used it, actually, we used it up on the Sarko property in northeast Everett, where the old Smelter site was, which is now a residential neighborhood of townhouses, and it worked very well there.
Have you looked at using it in some, I can think of some downtown properties on the top of my head. I'm just curious, has there been any investigations as to maybe using it?
No, we're, we're looking just kind of area-wide right now, and doing an assessment, starting an assessment of all the properties within, basically, I think, east of Colby to determine, you know, a variety of factors that would constitute blight, or if they're not present, that would not be blighted, but have a little bit more of a systematic approach to, than just, you know, pointing at a building and saying, yeah, there's blight.
There are some buildings in the downtown area, and I think we all know that they're probably pretty, they're, they're, they're not safe in terms of their structural condition. And so I, that's the only reason why I'm, I mean, I understand developing a systematic approach, but there are some buildings that are of concern, and we've had problems with them in terms of fire and other issues that have come up in the past, so I was just kind of curious. I think developing a systematic approach, that way it's not about any individual piece of property, is definitely the way to go, but I think that we do have some buildings in the metro plan area that are concerning in terms of their condition.
Right, and that's something that we heard loud and clear from the public, that, you know, they wanted us to get a little bit more proactive toward some of these properties that were either, you know, blighted visually, or just underperforming economically.
Electrically, structurally.
Structurally, right, a number of conditions that weren't living up to their potential.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions. How will the metro, is it, it's almost acting like an overlay, so is it kind of like a meta-overlay, and it's going to supersede all the other ones, or is Metro Everett kind of a test, like a pilot project right now?
Well, that's a great question, and what we're proposing to do is basically replace all of the existing zoning, so it wouldn't be an overlay, it would be a replacement of 12 or 13 existing zones down to the, the three that David mentioned. And so, but what we're looking at doing, and this is kind of a pilot for the rest of the city, to simplify and streamline our regulations, because we've got a code book that we adopted back in the end of 1989, and we've added to it, and added to it, and added to it, without taking a lot away from it. And it's gotten to the point where it's tough for professional planners to find stuff in that code book when, and answer simple, not simple, but questions that, legitimate questions that come up every day, and, and so if it's tough for us, then what is it like for the average citizen to navigate through this code book? And so that's one of the things that we would like to do, is make it a lot more user-friendly, and to encourage development in the areas where we want to see it develop, simplify the regulations and the processes. And so we would potentially expand that beyond the metro, and this is a good opportunity for us to test this system out in a more confined geographic area.
Okay. And then I'm wondering why, so on page 15, and on the new proposed boundary, this was from the handout that you guys sent to us, you, you know, you talk about wanting the boundary to be compact, but if we bump up that area that includes North Middle and their playground, I think, you still have Clark Park and these other three kind of sections. Why don't you just bring the boundary across 24th, and then it's compact?
Okay, no, that's, that's a good question also, and what we're trying to do with the original boundary is avoid any single-family neighborhoods.
Okay.
So R1 and R2 zones in particular, and Clark Park and those blocks that are excluded from the boundary are, are two-zoned, and so that's, that's the reason.
Okay. And then just one suggestion, when you talked about streamlining some processes to improve different land use codes, we had talked about in the detached accessory dwelling unit. different land use codes, we had talked about in the detached accessory dwelling unit chapter of our lives around having like pre-approved plans for that to streamline some of that infill. So just one idea there, to take some of those components, that's just one way to streamline some of those processes, to have pre-approved plans and...
And that is something that some communities, larger communities like Portland, have done, they've sponsored a design competition, and architects submitted, and they came up with plans that they will have already pre-approved so that, given lot sizes and scenarios, they can work those. But those are really in the single-family areas, zoned areas outside of the metro area. But, no, that's another streamlined tool for encouraging that infill.
The only comment I would make about streamlining is I hope that somehow we, I don't know how to do it, but how do we keep, you know, how do we encourage aesthetic beauty, you know, with the new developments and all the new buildings? And how do we get, you know, how do we keep, how do we make Everett more beautiful, you know, in the process? So that's just something that I don't know how, I don't know exactly how to do it. They say you can't legislate taste, but, you know, there's got to be a way. Maybe you can ask some of your architect buddies about it or something.
Well, I think that when we get to, one of the future workshops, Niels has got some really good work on the building forms and typologies that have certain design elements that are kind of traditional in an urban setting that I think will lend themselves to, you know, being aesthetically pleasing. Again, it doesn't regulate the design as much as certain elements that have to be in a building, but I think that you've probably seen some codes like this in your line of work, Richard, that...
The only thing about the creative process is you don't always know what's going to be nice or what's going to be beautiful. It might be a complete surprise, and it might be completely different from anything anyone's ever seen before, so.
Right.
I don't know how to, you know, that's kind of just my way of throwing a wrench into everything, I guess.
No, it's a challenge, definitely. I mean, we've had design standards in the downtown, various iterations for 30 years now, and, you know, some, you know, I guess the planner's prayer is, you know, please give me a good applicant and a good architect, and, you know, it's, you know, a lot of it has to do with how much a property owner wants to spend and what the architect's budget is to work with. And so you understand that better than I do.
Good work. Lots of it. This is a heavy, heavy lift.
Public feedback, perhaps.
So nothing else from the council? So is there any public comments, if you would come forward and state your name and add this to the...
Kent Everly, 312 Pex Drive. In relation to the agricultural transfer of development rights, I see that more as an effort for farmland preservation. And in the Puget Sound area, I've seen that as a big failure, because you get very spotty preservation, preserved parcels that are not contiguous with anything that can become a sustainable agricultural area. And so those landowners are kind of saddled with a problem then. What do you do with this farm that you really, I mean, you're very limited on what you can do with it if it's not in an area where you have other agricultural resources, for example, or a market, or supplies, to be able to do whatever you want to do with it. So I'd be cautious about that approach, quite frankly. We know we do have a unique area here in Snohomish County in that we've got the whole valley that, because of environmental issues, can't be used for a lot of other things except agricultural, and then only seasonal. I mean, you can't build a big building out there without getting above floodplain, for example. But those parcels might be reasonable to, as long as there's some program where you're keeping a large area in that use zone. Now, dairy farms have been a big use in this area, and they're disappearing. Now, part of that's a lot of other reasons beyond zoning. I mean, you've got the market and a lot of other pressures involved there. And if my recollection is, there's a slight amount of zoned area in the city of Everett that is agriculture, if I'm not mistaken, but it's down in the floodplain, if I'm not mistaken. Obviously, that might be an area that would be acceptable for this kind of a program, because it's not being used for agriculture probably anyway at this point, because it is a floodplain, if I'm not mistaken.
Well, actually, if you go down there in the valley just south of Lowell Neighborhood, you'll see a lot of those fields actually being re, converted back into farming. They've been fallow for a long time, but there's a blueberry farmer that's putting a lot of that back into active agriculture.
Right, yeah, yeah, I'm aware there's some parcels there. And that's a good area for pea patch-type farming, in essence, you know, if you get enough people interested in it. And we do have the big pea patch down there, I believe. But anyway, those are just some thoughts I have about, you know, going, you know, what's the purpose of it? Is it to get the property rights, or is it to preserve farms? And if it's preserve farms, we need to be careful about how we're going about that, so...
Yeah, thank you.
I have a quick question regarding that, Alan. It's my understanding that it is a programmatic approach that they have when you put a TDR together, that you, I think, like, Forterra sponsors it, but they actually look at what are the targeted farmlands that they're interested in, you know, keeping, you know, in terms of acquisition. And so it is very strategic. It's not random, and it's not just, you know, available to anybody, is my understanding, in that it is a cooperation with another jurisdiction that can take the density. I mean, I don't know very much about it, but my understanding is it is very targeted and strategic in nature.
That's correct, and the county's done a lot of work on this, and they're really pushing the transfer of development rights for the purpose of farmland preservation. And, you know, whether or not it would work in Everett remains to be seen, but, you know, if we can create that option within our codes, then, you know, perhaps it will at some point.
Thank you.
JT? Oh, I'm sorry.
Hi, Christina Strand, 2115 Wetmore. I just had a question. There was a comment about current codes and maybe readdressing those and seeing what's applicable and maybe what we can get rid of. Is that going to be kind of a similar process to what you're doing here with public input, or is that more of a committee-based concept?
Thank you for the question. It will be something that will be a separate process from this. Hopefully, when we're done with metro, one of the things that we want to do is take a look at that whole code simplification process, streamlining, for the rest of the city. And so when that does start, it'll definitely be a public process.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. JT?
My comment goes to the quality of life of the people that will be living in the TODs. I don't know if you've had occasion to see the TODs at the Ashway Park and Ride. There must, how many would you say there are? 20 large apartment buildings in the cultural style of the day? However, I would suggest to you that they are not at all gracefully situated or offer much at all in the way of a pleasant place to live. To your starting comment about the urgency for affordable housing, that fact and the fact that TOD is the buzzword of the day makes me a little bit nervous that the resulting product and some of it we're going to see in the metro district will not be too attractive at all. And I would urge you, as a member of the planning committee, with an interest in beautifying the city, which I share also, and which I think you do see in the graceful downtown on Colby especially, and the sculpture that the cultural arts people have installed, it's something to aim for in the TOD areas. And while I understand you really don't have any authority as far as transit goes, I do think this is something where you definitely could exert your influence, and I would definitely encourage you to do so. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anything from, okay. My agenda says other business.
We do not have any other business from staff tonight.
Okay, so I think that that would be someone making a motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn.
All right.
Second.
Second. We need to roll on it? Okay, thank you. November 7th.
Lunch tonight.
Good job tonight.